Good evening and welcome. The February 27, 2023 Board of Education meeting for the Cedar Rapids Community School District is called to order. Do we have a motion to approve the agenda?
I move the agenda of Monday, February 27, 2023 Board of Education meeting be approved to set forth and that each item is considered ready for discussion and/or action.
Do we have a second?
Second.
This is a roll call vote.
Director Roundtree.
Aye.
Director Humbles.
Aye.
Director Newman.
Aye.
Vice President Garlock.
Aye. Tonight, we have two public hearings regarding the new Arthur Elementary School site and the food service equipment. Board Secretary Day, have we received any written correspondence related to the public hearings?
We did receive a written correspondence this morning from Save CR Heritage that all board members were copied in.
Okay, thank you. Do we have anyone who has requested to address the board regarding the published hearings?
We don't have anyone registered for public hearings.
Okay, thank you. Our public hearings are officially closed. Superintendent Sadoff, I'll turn the meeting over to you.
Great, thank you. Well, a few things to share with you in tonight's superintendent report. First of all, this week is National Public Schools Week, and the Here for the Kids Campaign brings together families, educators, and community members to all take part and celebrate the public education experience. This slide shows a few suggestions of how to do that. We always want to shine a light on our public schools and the many wonderful things that are happening in our classrooms and our school buildings, and that's a very well-picked hashtag there because we're, we are all here for the kids. Reminder for you with regard to Magnet School Lottery. The lottery for the 2023-2024 school year has been extended one week, and as you can see on the slide, their applications can be submitted through Friday, March 3, until 11:59 PM. That deadline was extended in part to some new information that will be shared this evening during the meeting. The next two slides go back to this past Friday evening. Hoover Community School observed Black History Month with a community-wide open house celebration of African culture. The event showcased the food, dancing, clothing, student activities, and history that make Africa a special place. This next slide, 610 Viola Gibson Preschool through 5th grade students took part in the Readapalooza 2023 event. Students took reading breaks for a reading reset. Each Gator student received a new book and got to hear from local community leaders sharing different genres of books. Way to read, Viola Gibson Elementary. And finally, just a, just a note to show you some of the postings that we have and to offer an invitation for people to apply. We have featured CR, CSD careers that we're sharing here. This is just a snapshot of some of our open positions. If these or other positions interest you, we would invite you to apply today. And that's it for tonight's report.
Thank you, Superintendent Sadoff. Do we have any other board reports? Director Humbles.
I have one. This past Friday, I was a judge at Franklin Middle School for their Black History Month and looking at the different posters. So there were 16 of them that were up, and the artwork was, was beautiful. Spent a lot of time there trying to decide, but I, I, I did have a great time, and I thank Franklin for inviting me to judge their posters.
Thank you. I think there've been a number of Black History Awareness events going on that board members have participated in, and I believe there's still some coming up this week. So, thank you, everyone who participated. Any other board reports? I do want to just give a little update on the IASB Day on the Hill that a few of us attended. Director Borcheting and Superintendent Sadhoff and myself attended that a week and a half ago. We spent the afternoon at the Capitol talking to legislators primarily on two issues, preschool funding and teacher licensure. I think we had very constructive conversations with most of our legislators, so we were really happy to have that opportunity. And from what I've heard, our influence on the preschool funding issue was heard in the Capitol, and so we're hoping for a good outcome on that. So, thank you, Superintendent, for attending with us. Next, we'll hear from those who've requested to address the board. Laurel, do we have any members of the public that have requested to address the board?
We have two individuals who are interested in addressing the board this evening.
With two speakers this evening, you'll be given up to five minutes for your remarks. Please respect the time limit allotted to each speaker. Board Secretary Day will serve as your timer and indicate when your time has expired. The time is yours to use and may not be yielded to another speaker. If you've submitted a request to address the board and choose not to speak, in interest of equity and fairness, your time may not be yielded to another speaker. In order to abide by the Open Meetings Law, there will be no dialogue between board members and the public during this time, except to clarify the nature of questions or comments from the individual speaking. We ask that the audience and the speakers refrain from using inappropriate language and outbursts as a matter of respect for all in attendance. This board has zero tolerance for profanity, vulgarity, demeaning language, or threats of any kind. Lastly, I'd like to remind our speakers that the board is unable to address personnel and student matters. There is a process outlined in board policy which provide guidance on how to address and resolve those concerns. We ask that speakers refrain from using personal names and information during public comment. Before we begin, I'd like to remind our speakers to please state your name and your address for the record when called to the podium. Laurel, please call our first speaker.
Our first speaker this evening is Kate Hoag. Kate is representing the Cedar Rapids Education of Office Professionals. Her topic is district morale.
Good evening. Thank you for this opportunity. Kate Hoag, 2750 Otis Road Southeast. We are here for the kids, even the hourly workers, and we're so glad to be part of thriving, vibrant schools, even the hourly workers. Following up from our, your last meeting, when we reported on the district mandated lunch break implementation and other work schedule changes, I'm sorry to report that our district morale is still being undermined by this process. If it's meant to be supportive, maybe we should feel supported. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Mary McHenry. Mary is here representing the Cedar Rapids Education of Office Professionals as well, and her topic is mandatory lunches and lack of flex time.
Mary McHenry, 2615 Buchanan Drive Southeast. So, what have we been doing on our mandated lunches lately? Spending so much emotional labor, talking about the lack of flexibility in our workplace. I have been up the last two nights thinking about it. They say it's supportive, but I felt more supported when my administrators let me flex time so I could take care of my mother who had cancer in 20 to 20, the year 2021. Now I have a second parent with cancer, and I am the primary caregiver. It would be lovely if I could adjust my lunch a little bit and scoot out so I could take him to his appointments that are every other day right now while he's healing. I'm going to run out of PTO and sick time, and if I have a health crisis, what will I do? I've seen what's happened to some of our other hourly employees who have had major health crises. They were forced out with very little compassion, in my opinion, and compassion from the building and compassion from our administrators, but very little, it's just black and white and a lack of compassion from this building. I've asked a friend in another district about flexing their time, and they say when needed, they can. And this is another, a secretary in a different district. So what are the hallmarks of a good workplace? Compassion, respect, and understanding and flexibility. Understanding when employees have accidents, illnesses, personal issues. People go the extra mile when they're treated with understanding and respect. They do not feel like going the extra mile when they feel like they're in fight or flight. They're fear, they're led with fear, and it feels like control. Flexibility. Life happens, and changing up our work schedule by just a little bit is not the end of the world when an employee has a crisis. It should be the norm. It's, we're people, we have issues, and we are the lowest paid employees in the district. These mandatory lunches are directed at the hourly employees that are all historically the lowest-paid employees. We are the ones with second jobs. It's nice on a Friday when I could skip my lunch and leave half an hour early so I could be rested for my second job on Friday night. The best leaders, I think, are flexible leaders, and I feel supported in my building. I, I, I like our administrators, I love my coworkers, I love the feeling of Kennedy High School where I work, but I feel like we're going to create an us against them. We are the building and we're the hourly employees. This is the ELSC, and I don't think that's what we want. I think we want a collaborative, you want to all feel part of Cedar Rapids Community School Districts. Keep it a community. That's what we should be. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Moving on to our consent agenda, are there any items that a board member would like to pull for a comment, question, or a separate vote? Do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda? Is there a second?
Second.
This is a roll call vote due to the personnel report.
Director Humbles.
Aye.
Director Newman.
Aye.
Director Merschbach.
Aye.
Director Roundtree.
Aye.
Vice President Garlock.
Aye. Next is an update on City View High School. I'll turn the meeting over and presentation over to Adam Zimmerman.
Good evening, everyone. It's great to be here with you today. I don't think I've been in front of you, I'll wait till this comes up, in front of you since the grant was announced, so it's great to celebrate publicly. $14.8 million is nothing to sneeze at, and we are very excited as we scale up our efforts and move through this year, really looking to launch anew in August. And so, the presentation tonight will be about City View, and we'll get into not only the concept and update you on what conceptually that looks like, but we'll also dig into some of the details at the end with a very exciting announcement on the location, which we are, we're excited about. I'll start by grounding us in what a magnet school means here in Cedar Rapids, what the mission and vision of that program is, and how that aligns with our district mission and vision. Before we get into that, I should say there are lots of thank yous to go around, but there will be a few participants today from the community who I want to especially shout out. Laura McBride is here, Doug Newman is here, and Hugh Eckberg has been a very big participant in taking our City View concept from just a concept and idea and really preparing us as we launch in August. So, thank you very much. Your partnership is meaningful and essential to this work, so thank you. So with that, our magnet programming is mentioned twice in our strategic plan for a very purposeful reason. We think it's a key strategy as we drive towards our system indicators, which are student achievement-related. We've been very clear as we revision our magnet schools, this is about student achievement, gap-cutting, and proficiency, and we, and we need to see that in these schools. So we innovate with that purpose in mind. Coincidentally, or not, it's not, but the federal government also agrees with that purpose. And so, as we've gone through the process of first applying and then getting and scaling up our, our grant, three purposes we've adopted that are federally mandated. So first, the Magnet School Assistance Program Grant is an integration grant. It was one of the first federal strategies to integrate schools, and that's a purpose that we are very committed to and have strategies around. Second, we are seeking to create theme-based schools that work, which means student achievement rises and gaps close. And then third, we want to create and sustain for the long term, which is to say, what in these incubators, these magnet schools, can we learn and then scale across the district? As we get clearer on these purposes, we will be reporting out with the measures that we will report out to the federal government, to you as well. The vision of the program is to be in complete alignment with the district mission and vision. This isn't something extra. We hope that these can be incubators as we think about what it means to be a plan, to have a plan, passion, and pathway for every student in the district. We think that the promise of magnet schools is to go create that, make that real, and make sure that every student has access to that on a day-to-day basis. And so, the strategies that we've put in place, we've written about in the grant, those were all organized around that mission, and we believe that's a promise that we're trying to go realize in the following five years and beyond. We think that City View will be the leader of that group because they are working on concepts that are into the Level 5 of HRS, right? Personalized competency-based education. They're designing a school from, from the start around. So they're going to talk about their school concept, how they're articulating our mission, our vision in that school concept, and they get into logistics tonight. So with that, I'll invite Dan up to talk through. Thank you.
Thank you, Adam. Thank you, board, for having us, me and Doug and Laura here in a second. So, it's been busy since I visited with you last, in I believe, September, and not just busy, but I believe productive, and I think that's much more important than just being busy, right? The reminder, the plan is still a non-traditional school day, one that's focused on community partnerships and getting students out in the community through projects similar to, as we do at Iowa Big. Workshops, an opportunity to learn more in short chunks about the, the standards and the core curriculum that impact them, and also how they can see that in their community and to really contextualize that learn. There will be classes of sorts, but it'll be much more driven by students' interest and, again, cross-cutting standards so that they're seeing multiple subjects in one class period. This isn't so focused on the 45-minute bell schedule or the 90-minute bell schedule. It's much more focused on the students owning their learning and seeing that learning come to reality inside the community. The graduates will have a defined path. That will be the plan. I met with a student today from outside of our district who's interested, and he has an idea. He knows what he wants, which is great, but as we tell them, awesome, we want to help you explore that, and then maybe at the end you'll change your mind, and that's fine too. But we want to make sure that you have an opportunity to really dig into these concepts, see what it feels like, what it looks like to do this work, and also get exposure to other opportunities out there in the community and in the world. So the idea is a student from City View, as we've reiterated, can go to any direction after school. This isn't about preparing them directly for the workforce, but if that's what they want to do, we'll prepare them for that. It's not about preparing them directly for university or a community college, but if that's what they want to do and that's their next best step, we'll prepare them for that. This is a slide that I've shown to students as we've gone to the different middle schools in Cedar Rapids to talk about what is City View and what's it going to look like. And we really try to dive into the fact that it's about their goals and, again, taking ownership of their learning, discussing with teachers how they want to tackle these standards in front of them and the support they'll need to get there, as well as developing that vocabulary and understanding what is out there in terms of after high school. So again, the idea here is that we're preparing them for their next steps on their pathway and to even start to take some of those while they're with us, and so that they're better, ready, prepared, and can articulate more what their vision is for their future. So the demographics, as far as our recruitment efforts so far, this is a bit of a cluttered screen, but there's a lot I want to show here. The top left will show you the overall demographics of the Cedar Rapids Community School District. The top right is all of our City View applicants so far, and I believe that number's around 107. Bottom left is all of those that have accepted, and that number's at 53 currently. We have another lottery as Mr. Santoff, Sadoff, sorry, Dr. Sadoff, mentioned earlier that will be this Friday, and we have about 33 new people into the lottery that they will then have an opportunity to accept or decline, and I, and I've been told there's a couple more coming as well. As you can see, there's work to do. We want this to be representative of our school district, and we're not quite there yet in who is accepted. There's work to do, we're totally aware of that, and we want to reduce that gap so that that top left looks like our bottom left. This is an important indicator to us and something that we'll continue to work on. In doing so, we're going to continue to try to collaborate with different groups in the, in the community and make sure, one of the things that we're fighting right now in conversations we have, is this belief that City View is for a certain type of student. So again, the message I had today with a student I talked to who said, somebody told me who goes to one of your schools that this is just for the super smart kids. Like, that's not true, and we don't define kids as super smart kids or the dumb kids. That's not in our vocabulary. In my history as an educator, I know that, that doesn't exist. It's what are you interested in, and then you'll really be able to dive into it, and we'll help you grow from there. That will be our goal, and has continued to be our message and will continue to be our message. Bottom right is, as best as we know from our lottery, the free and reduced enrollment for the students that have accepted City View. That unknown is because they're not currently our students, and so we don't know all of their information. Our next steps. So one of the steps in, in helping make sure the community sees themselves in City View is our design days that we'll be holding as soon as Tuesday. We had a training from, a national trainer came out and spoke with us about what those could look like, and we want to give the parents an update, parents and students, and then we want to give them an opportunity to have their voice in the room as far as what does education mean to them and what do they think it needs to look like on a day-to-day basis. From there, we intend to write some commitments to them and when we have their students in our space, what they can expect from us. And then this is an ongoing dialogue that we intend to circle back to regularly throughout next year to check on, see how we're doing. Hiring, excited to announce that we've, we've interviewed for one position and have started some screenings for some teaching positions, so the staff is starting to, to take shape, which is super exciting because then we can really start to put some of the logistics and the nuts and bolts in place and have their voice in the room as well as we talk about really executing on this vision in, in ways that we've seen models already throughout the country. Which brings me to the next point. There's still a long list of, of potential dates to travel and connect with other communities throughout the country. Iowa Big, we have a group from New York City coming on Thursday who are all innovative schools that want to see what we do, and we intend to learn from them in that space as well. What do they do, how do they do it, and why? So those opportunities are still present, and we're still diving down that path. Little bit, real quick, about national and state support. As, as I talked about last time, the XQ Foundation is still on board, we're still talking with them, and they're giving us opportunities for learning, one I'll talk about here in a second. New schools, I meet with monthly on a call with somebody through their venture fund to talk about our needs as we start to, to build up to opening. Are we on pace? Are there supports that we need from them, ideas we need from them? As well as, we went to a conference in New York a couple months ago, and then there'll be another one in, in New Orleans soon, so that we can hear from other educators throughout the nation that are doing this similar type of work. So we make sure that we're bringing a product that works for our community because it's working in other communities. Some of the others that we've talked about, Adam highlighted the MSAP, the XQ in Spring Point. Spring Point is a partner in school design that has helped facilitate some professional learning with us and that we continue to look to partner with in the future for drilling down on that instructional vision, codifying the instructional vision, things like that, as well as the STEM Best Grant, which is a state organization that awarded us the $40,000 for STEM Best, specifically when it comes to workplace learning for our students. The New Schools Venture Fund is an opportunity that will come up in the late spring, then interview process to earn another potentially $400,000 towards the school and continue that partnership to learn, again, from a, a solid network of schools. Community support. Here, I want to bring up Laura McBride quick. So here are the different organizations that we've met with already. These are not necessarily folks that we have concrete in, but these are, we're well along the path of developing some specific goals and plans to help our students interact. You'll see, hopefully, that it's, it's quite a cross-section of community organizations. We're not focusing on necessarily just one type of organization, but really wanting to be showing the students how the learning happens through the community by being located within the community. And somebody I think that can give a great voice to that is Laura.
Thanks, Dan. Good evening, everybody. Laura McBride, passionate and professionally and personally passionate about not only our school district, but our ability to have more relevant experiences for our future workforce. So whether kids in our district are going to the workforce, or they're going on to the trades or to college, eventually, they are the citizens of this community, and they are in the workforce. So as an employer and as a current partner of Iowa Big and a future partner of City View High School, I think you're going to hear tonight a little bit about the location and proximity and our ability to be in very close proximity to a lot of business resources and partners, but for high school students to have more relevant relationships, more relevant in-person experiences, workshops, job shadows, projects with community partners and businesses, it really just continues to open up their eyes to not only what's in this community, but what the possibilities are for them. So I think the two things that I'm most proud of to be the very first high school magnet in this state is that there are plenty of business partners and community members out there that want to partner with this school because, one, it's the development of, of the workforce, but number two, it's also the retention. My own kids have gone through Iowa Big, and at the end of Iowa Big, they were like, wow, I never knew this existed. I met this person and they said this. The bottom line is it's relationship and people and getting our kids in a non-traditional environment outside of the traditional classroom day, I think is going to provide us some new opportunities for our students in the district. Thank you.
So I think that's, the most exciting part is the location. We, we've chosen a space in the heart of the city that's within walking distance to most of these places that I just showed. The, if they're not in walking distance, it's a place that a lot of these folks will come anyway, even if it's not there. It was the least expensive of the options we dug, dug into, and I think we, we toured probably four or five different sites, and I have a list of, of about eight or more that we really dug into to look price and so on. So with those parameters, this helped us the best there, and then the community partnership is incredibly strong. So with that, I want to bring up Doug Newman. Our location is, we intend to share space with the Economic Alliance and to be in their space as well. This provides the students an incredible opportunity, as you see on the map, where City View is, is where Economic Alliance is, not that we're taking over. But to share that space, it gives those community partners within, again, walking distance and access to community partners coming in regularly for different events, different meetings at Economic Alliance, and I'll let Doug speak to our excitement with that a little bit.
Dan, thank you. Good evening, board. It was gracious of Adam and Dan to thank me and Laura, but we're really kind of bit players in this. These guys have been doing yeoman's work, the district, many others from the district involved in, in this as well, and I guess I want the, the board involved in this as well, and I guess I want the Board to know the spirit in which they do all of this. I mean, we've been through a lot of details, both on the location, but also on the business integration and the business community's role in this school, and they always are coming at it with the filter of what's best for the school district and especially the filter of always, always, always what's best for students. So you should be proud of your team here. Laura and I talked, are going to say some of the same things, maybe in just a little different way, but you know, it's interesting that we wind up here with a location that happens to be the Economic Alliance, and I'll talk to you just a little bit about that. But I hope that if the location had wound up somewhere else, that I still would have been part of this presentation. I mean, my role as now shared building space with this project opens a lot of opportunities, and we're excited about those, and I love to talk about those. But the business community and the Economic Alliance has been excited about this project for reasons way beyond the location that was announced now. We're excited because of community growth prospects and some of the things that Laura touched on with workforce development. Show people career pathways, show people quality of life, show people economic opportunities right here in this community, and there's a much greater chance that ultimately they wind up in this community, whatever that pathway is and however long it takes them to make that pathway. The quality of the future workforce, the relevance is a really key word here. Business leaders have long been partnered with education to make sure that we're churning out students that have the skills and that we're having relevant education so that they're ready when they do get to the workforce. And then really, something that's probably more important to us than it is to the school district, because this is our job, not yours, but the unique characteristics of this school give us a way to market this community in an extraordinary way. Very few places have a school that, a school like this, and the places that do are growth communities, they're aspirational communities, they're places where people want to be, and to have that as an additional asset, to have that something as a way that we can market this community is a leg up for the work that we do to try to grow this economy, to try to grow this workforce, and to try to grow this community. So we're really excited about being partners here. We're working through all the details that it takes to be partners in the building itself and in the space, and we are excited about that. But I really don't want to lose sight of the fact that we're excited about being partners about this regardless of the location, because of the impact that it can have on the community and because of the really important integration with business leaders and the business community. So thank you.
Thank you, Doug. With that, we'll take questions.
I want to just make a comment before questions if I could, and thank Doug and Laura and Dan and Adam and everyone who's working very hard and putting a lot of thought and problem solving into this. I think it's incredibly exciting to co-locate with the Economic Alliance, and I can tell you, there are schools all across the state who are seeking authentic, meaningful school-to-work connections, and Cedar Rapids Kids, City View High School is going to be right in the middle of that downtown, and as you said, within walking distance, and people coming in to interact with the Alliance all the time. I think it's incredibly exciting for kids here in this community, and I appreciate too that it was the most sensible, most responsible economic decision too, which is great. So I just, I appreciate the problem solving because there are so many details in making something like this happen and getting to this point where you can package it nicely in a presentation. I know there are hours and hours and hours that went into this, so thank you.
On behalf of the Board, I'd like to echo that sentiment. Dan and Adam, you both have put in huge amount of effort to get us to this point. I think the Board is clear in their support of this project, and it's exciting to see it unfold. Laura and Doug, it's very nice to have you here. It's really also so exciting to see that screen up there that had all the business partners, the colleges, the nonprofits that are supporting us. So it's great that at this early stage, we have so much community support already, so thank you very much to all of you for your work. And I would open it up to my fellow directors for questions. Director Humbles.
Thank you for the presentation. It's pretty exciting, and I believe you said that currently you have fifty-three students enrolled. Is the max for the first academic school year, it's going to be two hundred students? When I look at the breakdown of the students that are enrolled, there is one concern that I have, because I look at African-American students, based on your information, currently there's only three that are registered in the program, but you have the seventeen percent for the two or more. So when you say two or more, and I'm going on what's... Here's my concern, is that I think it's important that we really have to get our students, brown and black students, engaged in this opportunity and that they don't miss out on it. I did see that you have thirty-three new that applicants, and when I calculate that, that would bring African-Americans to thirteen students. So I'm asking to make sure, I'd like to know what type of recruiting are you doing? That is one question, but then you say there's students that are joining that are outside of the district. My question is, how are they knowing about it? And we have students right here in Cedar Rapids that are not in the program or thinking about. So that was a lot, but it's two questions.
No, that's good. Thank you. One thing before I answer your question, I want to make sure that I shout out Trace Pickering as well. Dr. Pickering has been huge in this process, would have been here tonight, but he was on vacation. I don't want his absence to look like it's anything other than he couldn't make it tonight. Thank you for your question, Director Humbles. You and I have spoken, you gave me a list of predominantly black churches in the area, and like I said, my intent is to reach out, to get ideas from them, how to better connect with community members of color, to make sure that we can develop that trust. One partner on the sheet was LBA, and Alabanan has been a continual person that we've talked to. We haven't gone to directly recruit to LBA students. He's talked to some of the students about those, and I think that's partially what helped about our numbers for the second go-round, but we do intend to go directly to LBA classrooms and speak with them about the opportunity. In terms of the two or more races, that is based on the campus designation that parents choose. So obviously, when we codify races, we don't want to just go by based on what we see, but what they choose to associate or how they choose to associate. So that can be confounding, agreed, but those are a couple of the steps. I also have some other meetings that have gotten canceled through snow days with some other leaders in the black community to talk about what our vision is and why we think it works for every student, not just a certain type of student.
And then I noticed too, and thank you, on the chart, you don't have Latino students on the chart, and I'm trying, that piece is missing.
Yep. This is an area that would have helped our chart a little bit, but so it's broken down by race versus ethnicity, and so because of that, the way this is coded is not race and ethnicity. So we have, for instance, students on here that consider themselves white but Hispanic or and Hispanic, sorry. And so in that number, for instance, in our new applicants, six percent are Hispanic but not shown on this slide. We buried some of our slides because it was so data-heavy that we didn't want to inundate you.
Other questions?
Can I get those?
Yeah.
Those breakdowns?
Yeah, absolutely. I think, I think in the Board report, these slides were in there. We updated with some of the, one of the Board members asked for information about free and reduced, and so we put that in there, which changed our slide a little bit.
Director Roundtree.
Hi, thank you so much for this beautiful presentation. It is very exciting, I agree. Thank you for the time you put in putting it together, and that's really awesome. I do share some of the concerns that Director Humbles said. As being a mom that has had three children come through this district, three black, beautiful children, I did not know about Iowa Big until they were getting ready to graduate. So when we say this, I really want to bring it to you all's attention how serious this really is, to make sure that children of color, every economic background, they have the opportunity to be a part of something so beautiful in our district. What strategy do you have to make sure that people know about it on a wider scale, more than just through LBA or school visits? What opportunities are you opening up to parents even to even maybe have some input about the process? Because is this the whole team right here that spoke tonight?
No, but you wouldn't see much more...
Than this? Okay, well, cool.
Much more diversity than this, if you know what I mean, right?
Yeah, so I think that it would be nice, and I appreciate the work that you all are doing. It's great, and I know that you put a lot into it, and it's, thank you for that. I believe that better representation for all students is really needed, even in this process that you're in right now. And what are some of the strategies that you are using to get this word out? Where do you find these kids? What is the recruitment strategy, other than just, you know, school visits and some of the things that you've mentioned? I'd be interested to know that.
So one of the things, we're hoping the marketing campaign that we brought to you, I think it was an RFP a couple months ago, will help with that. We've started to develop some of those videos and things. That's part of the reason for that marketing campaign is to help with that. The design days, we're hoping to get more representation in those spaces, and that's our plan, because everybody on this list has been invited to those design days so that we can hear their voice and then dig in further if we see reason to, that can hopefully connect more. It is a confounding variable that we're struggling with, I'll be totally honest. We, our goal is not to have a group that's doing all leadership just look like me or have my background, right? We totally recognize that, and that's why we do seek, when we have consultants, we seek consultants of color for the most part. We have community connections that we've talked to as well. But it's absolutely a goal area that we want to continue growing, and if you have ideas, we're absolutely open.
I have lots of ideas.
Great.
And people.
Yes, yes, yes. I will, I will reach out, absolutely, but I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Other questions?
Two things that I would just add to Dan, and I think he covered it well, but was trust and access. So trust, we need to build it within the whole community, and I think when we build that, we'll see these numbers change, but the way I think we're going to go about doing that, the strategies that we've explicitly articulated in the grant are not just the school visits, but our school visits, right? And developing relationships with counselors, with teachers, with administrators, to be the voice, to pitch City View and say, "This is a great option for you. You should go check it out. Let me connect you with Dan," and be that bridge so that we can accept them and it will be more representative. But we've got to, Dan's made great efforts in our middle schools this year, and we'll continue to build those relationships and hopefully get that access in front of more families and more kids to make that choice, not this year, but in the coming years as well. Because if we remember, this is a five-year process and funded through five years, so it will develop and will get better, but we have strategies, we need better strategies, but it is a work in progress that we're committed to.
And just, thank you for that, and just one more thing, just, you know, one thing that sticks out is just making it a welcoming environment through this planning season that that diversity piece is welcome and that you are open, and you have said that today, and so I'll follow up with you later on about making sure that people know that this is an open and welcoming season, that they can get involved with this process as well. Thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
Other questions? Director Newman.
What happens to Iowa Big in the next year, and how does that evolve? Is it folding into City View?
Thanks for asking that question.
It's been a pretty successful program.
And it's not going anywhere. One of Superintendent Bush's visions, when she sat down and articulated the vision of City View was that Iowa Big remain a program that is accessible to all students in Cedar Rapids. And next year, we anticipate it be accessible to college community students as well. So it'll share our location, it'll have dedicated staff, it will still operate in many ways similarly to how it operates now. I envision tenth graders at City View being able to go into Iowa Big for their afternoon session or morning session, depending on their needs and wants. So I envision City View students having access to Iowa Big once they've kind of shown capacity to operate well in those groups or are excited to do so. But Iowa Big will still be a program for all Cedar Rapids students.
I do have a question. I know that you said you were working with LBA. Are you working also with the Academy?
So that was the, Dr. White, so I was, I, I'm sorry?
EYI is another one.
I have not reached out to EYI.
I'll hook you up.
I worked with EYI in my past job in the last couple of years, so I will reach out. The Academy, Dr. White and I had a meeting scheduled, snow day, derailed it, we'll have another meeting. I know Dr. White fairly well, so we'll absolutely have that meeting. But yes, that's a community partner I intend to work with.
Other questions? Director Merschbrot.
I was wondering, is there any further reporting that we have to do for the federal government for the Magnet Schools Assistance Program grant? That's, when I was reviewing it, it was specifically about integration, a lot of what we talked about and put in our application. Do we have to do any follow-up reporting specifically around, you know, the demographics of the schools and the Magnet Schools that we're funding with this?
Yep, annual reports. It'll be all the numbers. We have targeted goals to get to representation. The federal government uses this term called minority group isolation, which is a little different, but we've reported out every year on our progress towards those schools.
So could you just talk a little bit more about how City View helps our high schools? Because I know we're talking about the City View population itself right here, but those students are coming from the high schools, and so if we're getting to the goal of four hundred, what schools are we recruiting from and does it affect the popul... I mean, are we going to put ourselves into more minority group isolation at our high schools by sending kids to City View? You see what I'm saying?
Yeah, no, that's not the plan. The plan would be to recruit a cross-section of our population, so it is representative. We have explicitly called out our recruitment efforts at Metro High School to, because that is, it's currently has minority group isolation, to target, focus there, to say, "Hey, this is an alternative in and of itself. We do not want to just take a certain type of students. We want that to be representative so it wouldn't have adverse impact on any of the other schools."
Following up with the free and reduced lunch questions that I sent to you, is that just information we have on students, like the household income? Is that how we determine that? Is it based on what school they're at?
No, it's self-reported. It would be within each student.
It's self-reported and everything, okay. And so I was wondering, is that, could you break it down farther to not just free and reduced combined, but free one column, reduced another column? Because the same, you know, problem of representation is what, there's this idea that, you know, we've heard of called opportunity hoarding and, you know, the idea of the middle class, the upper middle class, the higher class, you know, they're taking the internships and stuff like that for themselves and for their kids. And so what I don't want to see is, it's like, oh, if you're in the bottom quintile of income, you just don't go to City View at all. It's like, we only take people who make, you know, medium income and above, and so free and reduced as one column is, you know, a good place to start, but if it's only, you know, reduced, and so they're all over the poverty line, I think we'd still be missing that bottom of the income scale, and I want those opportunities to be... I mean theoretically, like you were saying, this would show out as a great program at City View, and then we'd be able to integrate these type of opportunities across the district to any student, you know, and we'd have such great relationships, but in the meantime, while we have this, I'd hate for it to be that, you know, if you're below the poverty line, we just don't have any representation like that at City View when we're specifically trying to give opportunities in the business community with these partnerships, so...
I appreciate the line of questioning, and we can break down that data further.
Thank you.
And like I said, I hope we get the opportunity to keep this in front of you. It is going to be an annual federal report that we'll get in front of you before that. So I do appreciate the concentration, it's one of our focus areas as well, and we're going to continue to work there.
And then the last thing I wanted to ask about was the ongoing cost, like how much will this cost on a year-to-year basis, and how will that be funded? Is it just all through the grants at this point? Or when, when does the grant funding project to run out and we'll have to find another funding source?
Yep, so it's currently going to be funded through external grants and the ESAR money that we've started it with, and then we intend to wrap it into the general fund and per pupil funding when ESAR runs out at the end of next year.
So then it would just be based on enrollment? Would, how much have we put of ESAR, just, you know, do you know?
I can get an exact figure. We set aside a million upfront.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions? Okay. Dan and Adam, thank you very much for all your efforts. Thanks for your report. This meeting is now adjourned, and the Board will meet in exempt meeting. This meeting is now adjourned, and the Board will meet in exempt meeting.